Oh, thank you. December 19th Planning Board Meeting. Happy that you're all here tonight. Happy holidays to everyone. Please, if we could have Lucy a roll call, please.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. Let's move smartly on then, please. Move to item number three. Approval of the minutes of the November 21st Planning Board Meeting. Like motion if I could, please?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any discussion? Please.
The minutes. And I saw where Mr. Barhu had presented a lot of motion, but I thought he left early.
That was meeting before.
That was meeting before.
That was the October meeting.
Okay, then. Forget it, Mr. Barhu.
I remember that too, though. Hello there.
Sign other times, Mr. Chair.
There we go. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor regarding the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Alright, folks. Any citizens that wants to address the board concerning items on the agenda, we ask you to fill out the magic green form I'm holding in my hand. Come to the lectern, please state your name and address for the record. We have a limit of three minutes, so if you make your point under three minutes, we won't say no. That will be just fine. Want to let you know that I believe the clock is not working. Lucy, is that correct? Okay, so we're hoping you guys got good hearing. If you happen to hear the little bell go off, that'd be the end of the three minutes. So if you keep that in mind, please, we appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item four A. Can we hear from staff? And hi. Oh, I'm sorry. Please read.
My era.
Oh, my era. I'm the one doing the talking. My apologies, Madam Secretary. You slipped right in. You look great in red, by the way. Please.
Alright. Item four A SMA Healthcare Semi Public Use Permit DEV 2024-385 Quasi Judicial Hearing.
Thank you very much. Now let's hear from staff.
The Good Morning, Natalie Pettit, Senior Planner. This item is a request by Eric Horst, SMA Healthcare, for a semi-public use permit on a 3.51 acre portion of a 6.91 acre parcel. Am I echoing?
I don't hear it.
I can hear it. I'm getting like a lot of feedback from these mics, yeah.
Yeah.
Zoned Single Family Residential 5, SFR 5, to allow for the continued use of a nonprofit outpatient behavioral healthcare facility on an existing developed site into a grant associated waivers. The property is located at 1220 Willis Avenue, which is north of Daytona State College. The future land use on the property is schools, and the current zoning is SFR 5, like I just said. And this is the aerial of the property, which shows the existing development. SMA Healthcare is located on the southern portion of a parcel which is owned by the state. The northern part of the parcel is occupied by children's healthcare facilities, and SMA Healthcare has been in operation at this location since the 1960s. The facility's use most closely aligns with the medical or dental clinic/office use in the Land Development Code, which is not permitted, and the single-family zoning on the property. The status of the use is currently legal non-conforming, as determined by city staff in 2021. Because of this, SMA Healthcare is seeking a semi-public use permit to change the status from legal non-conforming use to conforming use, which will allow them to apply for grants and other fundings to eventually work towards expansion in the future. The semi-public use permit does include waivers, which will bring the existing facility and site into conformity with the code without requiring any physical alterations or changes to the property, which none are proposed at this time. If the semi-public use permit is granted with the waivers, it would allow medical or dental clinic/office as a permitted use on the southern 3.51 acre portion of the property, and SMA Healthcare could continue operations as is legally. So a bit more about the waivers. The requirements of the code can be specifically waived by the Planning Board and City Commission as part of a semi-public use permit request. The waivers being requested with this permit are detailed in the staff report and include reducing parking space and parking drive aisle dimensions, allowing existing unpaved access drive, and waive requirements to resurface it, reduce the two-way driveway with requirements, allow business district science standards to apply instead of residential science standards, waive landscape requirements for parking lots, perimeter buffers, and building perimeters, and waive requirement for a sidewalk connection from the property to Heinemann Street. The waivers would allow SMA Healthcare to operate legally without making alterations to the existing site, which, as I said, none are proposed at this time. And this site plan shows the existing conditions, so this site is as it is today. Any future expansions or alterations will be required to go through the applicable approval process, so none of those are approved at this time. Semi-public use permits are subject to the public or semi-public use permit review standards in the Land Development Code. If the waivers are granted, staff finds the proposed semi-public use permit meets the review standards of the LDC. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Board forward the semi-public use permit to allow medical or dental clinic/office as a permitted use for the continued use of a nonprofit outpatient behavioral healthcare facility on an existing developed site and to grant the associated waivers on a 3.51 acre portion of a 6.91 acre parcel zoned SFR 5 to the City Commission with a recommendation of approval. And this item is tentatively scheduled to be heard by City Commission for final consideration on February 6, 2025.
Very good.
That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Dan Lee, I just want to be sure that these additions and waivers, it's only applying to just this one property, correct?
Yeah, it's just this portion of the property, so just the specific use in the site as it is today. So it would allow them to operate legally without making any alterations or changes, so it's just this property. It's nothing else.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Please, Pastor.
Looking at the landscaping in the sidewalk. The other ones I understand...
It's on. It's on. Okay, good. It got turned on for you.
Okay. Again, I don't mind some of the waivers there, but what about landscaping and sidewalk? Are those things that they can do to upgrade?
They do actually have existing landscaping on the site, but because it's such a, it's a built-out site that's pretty tight, they don't really have room to meet our current code, which is a fairly recent code, which has very strict landscape requirements. So it's possible in the future, if they wanted to expand or like resurface the parking lot, they could add more at that time.
Okay, what about the sidewalks, especially with the type of work that they're doing and so forth, being able to tie into Heinemann Street?
Yeah, I don't believe there is a sidewalk that goes out to Heinemann Street. I don't know where this.
No, I'm just trying to...
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, well, we'll wait till the applicant comes.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Oh, I did want to probably help clarify this a little bit more, is that these waivers are just to allow this property to exist exactly as it is right now.
Understood.
So like any expansion, anything else they want to do in the future, they would have to come back to us for additional approvals. So this is just so they don't have to do any work, but change their status to legal.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please, Mr. Vice Chairman.
The only thing that I'm concerned with, it's, I have no problem with changing the zoning what it is. The only thing I was questioning is safety requirements, ADA requirements on something like this. Does the building meet the standards now? I mean, I'll ask the applicant, but I'm just saying that that would be the only thing that, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that it's safe and, you know, for the public.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's on the site plan or not.
I didn't...
Can you pull up the slide with the site plan? Whoever is controlling this camera that I'm watching? Because, yeah, I just wanted to show the parking, so the PowerPoints.
Well, it's not so much the parking, it's the inside of the building, you know.
That is a question for the building vision, but I believe it does meet like current safety standards, and I believe it would have to to be insured anyway. Here we go. So this is the existing site, so it does show that there is no sidewalk at all on Willis, which is probably why they can't connect to Heinemann. But they do have accessible parking spaces, so they meet those requirements for safety and access, so it's, yeah. For the exterior site. Interior, that's a question for the applicant.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Well, it seems like we have a couple of questions for the applicant, so could we hear from them if they're here? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mark Corren. I'm with Zeb Cohen Associates, 300 Nerchens Boulevard. And I'm here tonight with Eric Horst of SMA. He's the Director of Financial Operations. First of all, I just want to thank staff and Dan Lee for the report and presentation. I'll be happy to answer any of the questions you might have. I know you've asked about ADA. The interior of the building, we believe it does meet those requirements. Part of the, a lot of their funding comes from state and past due from federal government, so they all require that. For example, when the city gets CDBG funding, they have to certify that their facilities meet ADA requirements as well.
The only reason I even question this is on account of, you know, with the building... Being of this age and ADA requirements back then were pretty lenient, if any at all. You know, since the public's involved in, through a medical facility, whether it met minimum standards, you know, I think that I'm all for... Right now, that's all I'm for. I want to make sure people are safe, the public.
I believe it is. The building has, is inspected regularly.
And you're confident that there's no issues, Mark, as far as you know?
None to my eye.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
Well, again, my, again, my question goes back to the safety, again, tying to some of the things, but through the sidewalk, because I know you guys do good work out there, and I understand, and it's needed. It's just the safety. It is an older building. It's been located. I don't know how many upgrades, if any upgrades, have been done. And I know sometimes standards change, and in order to keep up with what's expected, yes, inspections are done. I've had older buildings worked on that, but sometime you have to bring it up a little bit. And so I was asking about the sidewalks, since we do serve folks that walk in or use that for traffic, and then just the landscaping as far as the beautification of the building.
Have you been to the site?
I've been through the site, yeah.
The site does look pretty good. There are some technical aspects of the current land development code that it doesn't meet, and that's why we've requested the waiver. But it's generally a pretty good site.
Yeah, I live not too far from there.
There's trees, there's lots of grass on it. But the interior of the parking lot, for example, doesn't have trees every so many spaces.
Yeah, I understand.
Right now, they don't intend to make any changes to the site. They are, have been operating in the current fashion for many years. They want to continue to do so as they have done. The site has not, you know, generated any code enforcement complaints. There haven't been any issues with the city in terms of the day-to-day operational site, and they'd like to continue to operate it as they have.
So you're saying, Mark, there is any issues that would warrant yours or anybody else's attention, again, as far as you know?
Correct. And I think if, if and when the time comes, when they do make some changes to the buildings, then we'll, then we'll bring portions of the site up the code that, you know, staff identifies.
Very good. Any other questions? Mr. Robinson, please.
Maybe this is for Mr. David. Would our recommendation for approval to move forward, would it put the city at risk in the future for, I know anybody can sue, but what is our risk? Because it's an older facility, and we're saying that it's in compliance. Are we going to waive the compliance? Would that put the city at risk?
Waiving the compliance is just certain standards that they're not able to meet as the building currently sits. So waiving those requirements isn't going to create any additional risk of liability to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, good question. And anything else for the applicant? Thank you for being here tonight, Mark. Appreciate your time. No other speakers I see here, so I'm going to ask for a motion for item four A, please.
Well, make a motion that we approve SMA Healthcare Semi Public Use Permit DEV 2024-385.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Move on to item four B. Madam Secretary, please.
Volusia Square Preliminary Platte DEV 2024-262 Quasi Judicial Hearing.
Very good. Evening, Luke. How are you?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
Excellent, thank you. Let's hear about this item, please.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Once again, my name is Luke. I'm a planner here at City Hall. I am presenting for Volusia Square a replating. This is a request by Mark S. Doust of Mark Doust and Associates, Inc., on behalf of Ralph Pagliano, Title VP of Volusia Retail, to approve a preliminary platte for the development of 20.1 acres of proposed retail space, subdividing an existing parcel into nine new lots. Land comes from not, land comes from, excuse me, that's a mistake. Land comes from east of Thames Road between the West International Speedway and South Williams and Boulevard. You can see right here, this is the outline. An aerial photograph. You can see the future land use is retail for the entire space, and the current zoning is a planned development. Pictured here is the nine new lots that will be split out of the existing lot. The proposed major preliminary platte is consistent with all lot dimensions, access, and infrastructure requirements outlined in Article 7 of the Land Development Code and subject to the Volusia Square District Agreement. The proposed major preliminary platte would split an existing parcel into nine new lots. Approval of the major preliminary platte allows for the applicant to move forward to the final platte approval process. Brief history is the Volusia Square PD Agreement rezoning was approved by the City Commission on October 4th, 2023. The PD is called Volusia Square Plan District Agreement. Staff recommends approval of the major subdivision preliminary platte for the waypoint. For the project to allow the replating of a single parcel into nine new lots on 21.1 acres east of International Speedway Boulevard, a majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission.
Very good, Luke. Way to walk around that waypoint. Well done.
Yeah, I don't know how that got in there.
That's okay. Any questions for staff? Seeing done, thank you very much. Luke, appreciate it. Could we hear from the applicant, please? Name and address for the record, if you would, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Back at you.
My name is Mark Doust, and I'm a project engineer with Mark Doust and Associates, and we represent the shopping center. We've been affiliated with the shopping center for many years. It's gone through lots of changes. It actually got kind of downhill, you know, the last few years. I don't know if you noticed. Went through a couple of owners, went downhill. The owners that bought it were experienced at working out shopping centers. They had us process a PUD to gain some flexibility, add some more uses, and they've pretty much got it almost all leased out. They're still working on a few extra tenants, so that's really good news. This platte split allows them to split the major tenants up into separate parcels. It's very similar to what we did when we did the Best Buy Shopping Center. Normally, we always split out at least the out parcels, but in some cases, when we have major boxes, we split those out. The purpose for that is it allows additional financing vehicles, allows them to redevelop boxes, in times they change tenants altogether. And that's the purpose of allowing the plating of that property. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try and answer them.
Well, it sounds exciting, Mark, that we're kind of replenishing this, this particular area. As you say, there's been some challenges of late, so it's good to see we're hopefully moving in a positive direction.
Yeah, retail's had a lot of challenges in the last five, 10 years.
Bricks and mortar. It's a struggle. Absolutely true. Any, any questions for the applicant, please? With that, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, speakers on this item, fellow members, I'll ask for a motion on item four B, please.
Okay, make a motion. We approve Volusia Square Preliminary Platte DEV 2024-262.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt Robinson. Back at you. Merry Christmas. Let's move on to Adam Ferci, Madam Secretary, please.
Adam Ferci, self-storage or mini warehouse facility uses, BR2 zoning district, oh, and BR2 zoning district Land Development Code text amendment DEV 2024-397.
Thank you, ma'am. Emilio, good to have you. This is, I think, your first go-around here, I think.
Yes, my first presentation.
Alright, go get them, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Emilio Bryan, Senior Planner here with the City of Daytona Beach.
Oh, Senior Planner.
So this is an amendment request. The applicant, Daytona Beach Center LLC, is requesting an amendment to Article 5 Use Standards, Table 5.2.A.2, Principal Use Table for Residential, Business, Industrial, Tourist, and Specialty Districts of the Land Development Code to permit self-storage of mini warehouse facilities as a principal use by right in the business shopping center BR2 zoning district. Additionally, the applicant seeks to amend Article 5, Section 5.2.B.23, Standards for Specific Principal Uses, LDC. The applicant has provided a proposed text amendment, which city staff has reviewed and modified to ensure alignment with the city's planning objectives, LDC, and community interests with also, while also accommodating the applicant's needs. So depicted in front of you now is a zoning map of the city of Daytona Beach, and it's just highlighting the BR2 zoning throughout the city. So you can see it's kind of splotchy. So the applicant's property is actually at the Bel Air Plaza on the north side of the city, the northeast side of Atlantic Ocean. So the amendment summary. The amendment seeks to allow self-storage or mini warehouse facilities as a principal use in the BR2 zoning district, which currently only permits them in the business, automotive, BA, and local industry M1 districts. Self-storage facilities must be part of a mixed-use development with storage units accessible only through interior corridors and no direct exterior access. Self-storage facilities cannot be located within 500 feet of a major thoroughfare unless part of a mixed-use development. Only the rental, storage units, pickup, drop-off of goods, and incidental sales, rentals of moving supplies are allowed. No outdoor storage or vehicle or boat storage will be allowed. So in the LDC, the definition of self-storage or mini warehouse facility, it is the following. Self-storage or mini warehouse facility is a building or a group of buildings divided into separate self-contained units or areas offered for rent for self-service storage of household and personal property. The storage units or areas are designed to allow private access by the tenant for storing and removing personal property. This is LDC Table 5.2.A.2. This is the principal use table that basically breaks down the permitted uses per zoning district. So this, it depicts that the self-storage of mini warehouse facility would be permitted by right. So this is the changes to the LDC here in front of you. It should be in your packet, so I'm not going to stay on here too long. This is the operational changes. This is the changes to the parking circulation section. This is the changes to the building appearance section. Staff recommends approval of the amendment to the Land Development Code to permit self-storage of mini warehouse facility as a principal use by right, subject to U-specific standards in the BR2 zoning district. A majority vote by the Planning Board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the City Commission. Item is tentatively scheduled for the City Commission for first reading on February 5th, 2025, and for second reading on February 19th, 2025.
Very good. It's nice that you only have to go through the first type once, and you just accomplish that. Well done.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff, please? Seeing done, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Okay, moving forward for the applicant. Come on up, Megan, please. Happy holidays to you. Love the green.
Thank you. Tried to channel some Christmas festivities. See it all. Megan Smith with Gardnerboro Hudson, 400 North Ashley Drive from the Tampa side. Thanks to you, Emilio. He did an excellent job with the presentation, so I will try to be brief so that we can all get our Christmas shopping or not Christmas shopping done along the way. I did submit a presentation. Is it, how do I make that function?
There you go.
Perfect. There we go. As I say, a lot of it, Emilio, already covered, so I will try to be brief. So this is a privately initiated text amendment. I'm here on behalf of IMC Equity Group, who is looking at a tenant space within the Bel Air Plaza located on North Atlantic Avenue and Plaza Boulevard. As Emilio mentioned, what we are suggesting or proposing tonight is to make self-service storage uses permitted within the BR2 zoning district, so that would put that P into the use category table there. With that, we really piggybacked on the Land Development Code. Already had some great framework with the RDD3 zoning district that they had within there. So we're trying to provide protections for the city of Daytona Beach. Know that storage units aren't always the most appealing piece of property, so we're maintaining the proposal that storage bays will be accessible from the interior corridor, so nothing will be visible from the right-of-way, so it would really just, you would come into the site and utilize it that way. There is no outdoor storage proposed, so there would be nothing outside, no RVs, no boat storage, nothing of that matter. And it would require a mixed-use component, so somebody couldn't come in and just propose a self-storage warehouse that's like an internal access. So makes it hopefully a little bit more of like a wraparound thought process and appealing to everybody. Why do we need self-storage is always, is a good question. So approximately 13% of households, according to the Self-Storage Association, are utilizing storage facilities nowadays for their seasonal decor, for the Christmas stuff that we want to go away here in a week or so, and any of their valuables. So it really has a need as house sizes decrease. It provides self-storage access that's safe and has security, and also provides security for their valuables. And then, as I said, I'm on the Tampa side, so we just got hit with a couple storms this year, and storage units really became critical for protection of people's property. And then also, while their homes are being renovated, it provides cold climate storage facilities that provide extra security. that provide extra security. So, kind of becomes a multifaceted approach that is helpful for your residents which are around this area. Emilio, cover this one as well. The impact of it, I know, is always a concern of the planning boards and commission. So, as you can see, VR two is pretty limited throughout the Daytona Beach area. There's a little concentration by the Daytona Speedway, Mason Avenue, and Beville Road, Nova That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Megan?
I have, I have one for Dennis.
Jump right in.
On something like this, especially in this neighborhood, I'm very familiar with folks up there. Was there any kind of meeting required for this, for a change like this, a public meeting or notice?
Yeah, there's no requirement for a neighborhood meeting for an LDC text amendment, because really, it's citywide, so it'd be very difficult to do a neighborhood meeting citywide. That's why we do the, it's a separate requirement for legal advertising and that we have to do for an LDC text amendment. So, no neighborhood meeting. I will say that we did meet with the applicant. They came in, we kind of discussed how this process would work. You know, our concern was the neighborhood, because we do have neighbors back there. It was to very much make sure that any kind of loading, unloading was going to be occurring in the back of the property where they already have the loading and unloading occurring, and that the doors weren't going to be visible from the public right-of-way. Everything, it was just like, almost a back-of-house operation and the storage occurring within the building itself. So, it was, we thought that that would be kind of the least intrusive type of a use for the area, so.
I don't have anything for the applicant. That was it.
There you go. Anything else for the applicant or for Dennis?
Mr. Robinson, please.
And then, Mr. Barhu.
So, like warehousing would not be appropriate?
Just mini warehouse storage as the definition. So, it's the, you know, it's really the public coming in there and being able to use the site. It's not the trucks coming back and forth. I will say, like, you gotta, a site like Bel Air Plaza, they do have trucks that go back and forth over there. So, you've got the publics over there, you've got the delivery of all the other vehicles over there. So, it's commonplace for all of these trucks to be back there. This is really just going to be a mix of the public coming, and a lot of times, they come with their U-Hauls or those trucks, and they're back and forth, kind of moving their things in the area. The, I will say that when we did meet with the applicant, they were really only interested in their property and how their property could have this use. After staff looked at it, and we had internal discussions with staff about what they were looking to do, we saw it as a great opportunity where we do maybe have some vacant buildings that might have an opportunity if a portion of that vacant shopping center or that vacant kind of a strip center could be used internally for some of this mini warehouse storage. We wouldn't see new buildings being built for the mini warehouse storage. We'd be able to occupy the existing buildings for this particular type of use, and we thought that that was a great use for some of those buildings that are out there. In this particular case, there is a vacant, I think, in the corner, is it the old bowling alley perhaps? The old bowling alley, which bowling alley's not coming back, and they couldn't fill the space. It's a very low-impact use. It uses very little parking for the use, which is great, because the shopping center, instead of using that use for maybe a retail, which would need more parking, all of that parking would be available for the rest of the center. So, we thought it would work out great, and we saw a great opportunity for other places in the city where it might work as well.
Okay, my question is to piggyback off of what you're saying.
Please.
Do we have any other main storage areas like these around, and do we have any on the beach side? Any others on the beach side, or is this the first?
I don't know if we have mini warehouse storage on beach side. It's, I think if we do, it's very limited.
The closest one I saw was across the Halifax River, so it's about four miles away for them to get, I didn't see anything on the beach side when I looked.
Okay. Anything else for the applicant?
Would this be a twenty-four access?
They would do limited hours and then code access for after, for, because it's geared more towards like residents, so after-work or something like that. So, not twenty-four hour, but a later hour access that's secured and keyed.
And you'd have adequate security?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else for the applicant? Megan, thank you so much. Happy holidays. Thanks for coming all the way here from Tampa.
My pleasure.
Let me, before we get into a motion, please, you're fine, thank you. Before we get into a motion, fellow members, I think we can safely say we've talked about self-storage often at this, with this board, and I think in this particular case, because of what we just talked about, there aren't many self-storage facilities beachside. We maybe have the debate of how many there are west of ninety-five, but east of ninety-five, not so much. But, even that being said, I'm a little concerned about the number and the magnitude of them. And my thought was, not necessarily for this particular item, but perhaps for the future, that we look at some sort of limitation or perhaps separation as far as making a standard to say we cannot have a self-storage facility, say, a thousand feet from each other, or something to at least give us a standard to work from, and then perhaps we see how many people may be coming with a lot of the good things that Dennis was talking about. But I just think we're getting to the point with self-storage that, speaking for myself, it's a little bit concerning, and I think perhaps if we can professionally close the box up a little bit, at least put some things out there and see if, how much that is effective and makes sense for us to do. So, I would ask the motion maker to consider some sort of separation between facilities of, separate from, is, would Dennis, would this be separate from our approval to have that discussion?
Well, I think what we can do is maybe keep this one separate, and if you can make the motion just for this item, and then we can take a look at that. But if you wanted us to, as staff, to take a look at maybe things that we can do with the code for the self-storage warehouse uses, and maybe do some separations or some limitations. You know, it was about four years ago, five years ago, that we included in a land development code that the, if a freestanding standalone self-storage place was to be located, it couldn't be located within five hundred feet of a major city thoroughfare. So, we did make some changes over there. So, you know, we could always look at opportunities to tweak that and see how we can also maybe do some limitations or separation requirements as well.
Mr. Robinson, please.
What about the, it's in a tourist area. What about the impact on tourism in that area?
Well, it is a tourist area, but there's also a large number of residential people up in that area, and, you know, the point of the, you know, with some of the storms that come rolling through here, you know, people do look for a location where, while they're doing renovation on their place, that maybe had damage, that they have a place to locate it, there is no place for that, or at least not a close place for that on the beach side for them to do that. So, it's a good mix. It's not as if we have a lot of mini warehouse self-storage on the beach side, so I think this is a good use for this location, and, you know, and other locations too. It's a use that obviously people have. It's a need that people have, and that's what we see.
Again, I wholeheartedly agree, but I do think we may have an opportunity to look at, as you mentioned, limitation, separation, and to be able to have some way to focus that we're not just accepting every opportunity that comes our way, that we do have standards that they need to adhere to, and hopefully, Dennis, we can look into that. I'm certainly comfortable, and I hope my fellow members are, of asking for a motion for item four C written as is. So, I will do that. If I ask for a motion for item four C, please.
Before we actually get into this, a comment. I don't want to see storage units being built or spring up in all of these districts, all these different, you know, B one, B two. I mean, I don't want to keep adding the T districts and all the other districts that we have. I think it needs to, we really need to look at it and see what we can do, say, because they're popping up. They're on some of the major thoroughfare, coming across the bridge. They're popped up there. They're on Mason Avenue. They're different places, and they're coming up more and more. And I understand, you know, we have smaller places, but we're buying larger couches, so we need somewhere to put them. I understand all that, but the fact of the matter is, I don't want to see them pop up in all the districts, and so I think we need to take a look at it. But yes, I think we need to look at this item separate.
And Dennis, we can incorporate that into the analysis.
Well, yeah, we'll take a look at that, and that's one of the reasons why I looked at the BR two. You saw the map. There's not a whole lot of BR two that's out there. It's kind of limited in the areas, but, yeah, that's, it wasn't something we were interested in opening up citywide, so it was, you know, kind of keeping that constrained.
There's good ones.
Please.
I would really imagine that there's, when the residents find out, it's a very vocal You know, and that's the reason I asked if there was any, anything like that. I think that beachside, that, I think it might be a good idea there. I hope it succeeds, but I think there needs to be a limitation, definitely, especially on beachside. This is a tourist area. They don't come here, you know, with their U-Haul, the play. You know, it's a housing district, it's very stable, and so I definitely believe that there needs to be further discussion from it.
Well, definitely do have this option in an area where storms can cause much more damage, all else being equal to residents' property, and for them to have an opportunity to be able to, while they get their life back together, have this option locally nearby to be able to store their goods makes perfect sense. I just want to be sure, and I think the discussion we're having is to say, let's put some standards around this, and hopefully Dennis can look into that.
It's almost like the tattoos shops and the CBD, CDB, the marijuana dispensaries, they're just popping up everywhere, and we ought to have some kind of, like you say, limitation or some standards that within a thousand feet or two miles or whatever. And I noticed that the self-storage, everybody's building self-storage, so.
Seems like it. It's popular, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's for sure. Okay. Well, I think we've, I think we've made that point, fellow members, so if I could ask Mr. Barhu, now that he's gotten that out about all the other various business districts, and we'll make sure we look at that, sir, could I ask for a motion, please, for item four C?
Okay, I make a motion for item four C, Land Development Code text amendment, DEV twenty twenty-four three ninety-seven.
The second, please. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you very much. Moving on to item four D. Madam Secretary, please.
Excuse me. Item four D, add auto sales and rentals to RDM-five, land development code text amendment, DEV twenty twenty-four dash seven six eight, legislative hearing.
Very good. Well, staff, it's Dennis on this one, so go right ahead, sir.
Dennis, Dennis Rosar, Planning Director with the city. This item is a request from Growth Management and Planning Department, the Planning Division, to amend Article Five Use Standards, Table five two A three, principal use table for redevelopment districts, and Section five two B, standards for specific principal uses of the land development code, to add sales or rental of light vehicles as a permitted use in limited areas for the RDM-five zoning district. So, this request would add sales of rental or rental of light vehicles as a permitted use in the RDM-five zoning district. That would be marked with the P, and you find that in, I think it's page two of your staff report for the RDM-five zoning district. The use would only be permitted on properties that are fronting West International Speedway Boulevard and located between the railroad tracks and Helmy Place, and I'll have a map up there, and I'll show you, and it's also in your, in your staff report, but it's a very limited area where this use would be permitted. The change in the code would be twofold. It would take a, an existing non-conforming use, a legal non-conforming use that's out there, and it's a prominent auto dealership that's out there, which is currently a non-conforming legal, but a non-conforming use. It would make that a legal conforming use, which means that if they were to make any modifications to the site, they'd be able to improve the site. Right now, they can't do anything to the site because they're kind of locked into what they have. The other opportunity is, there's a couple of vacant lots out there that, after having discussions with the redevelopment, redevelopment staff, that there's opportunities there where maybe a use like this would be appropriate, that location in this particular area, and I think that they are talking to somebody who has an interest in it, in a piece of property out there for this particular use, and by making this a permitted use in that zoning district, they would be able to come in there, modify the site, meeting all land development code regulations for parking, landscaping, building design, so it'd be an improvement to the redevelopment area, where right now, they haven't been seeing a whole lot of great progress in the direction that they wanted to go, so. So, the definition of the sales or rental of light vehicles, and this also includes light recreational vehicles, and I want to kind of get into that a little bit, and as I was looking through this, premises on which new and used automobiles, trucks, recreational vehicles, and/or trailers, less than twelve thousand pounds of gross vehicle weight, and in operating condition are displayed for sale, lease, or rental. The intention of this LDC text amendment was, we're just talking about the sales and rental of light vehicles. We don't want to include the light recreational vehicles, and what I would suggest is, if the motion were to be made, it would just be a motion for the light or, like, sales or rental of the light vehicles, and we're going to exclude the recreational vehicles from that as part of the change to the code. So, here's the, here's the area, really. That's the RDM-five zoning district for the properties that are fronting ISB between Helmy Place and the railroad tracks. It's a very limited area. Redevelopment has looked at this. They said that this is an actual area that might be, that, not might be, but would be appropriate for the use that we're talking, and they were comfortable with that. They took this to the Midtown Redevelopment Board. They presented it to the Midtown Redevelopment Board, and they got no objection from the Midtown Redevelopment Board. They accepted it, and that's why we're moving forward with it. One other change that we're going to make to this section in our, in our land development code, we have what's known as use-specific standards, so when somebody comes in for a use, they're required to meet certain standards. This was part of the old code that we're going to strike out, because it just didn't make any sense for this particular type of use. Excuse me. This particular type of use. So, one of the things that we're striking is saying that a large plaza needed to be located on one quadrant to the site with a minimum of three hundred square feet. It just doesn't make sense for a car dealership to have that, and that the project shall incorporate brick or other textured treatment in pedestrian areas, using material consistent or compatible with city standards. That's another thing that we talked to redevelopment. It's just that it makes sense to require a car dealership to do that. So, the, as far as a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the request to add just the sales and rental of light vehicles as a permitted use in this limited area. So, we would restrict out that recreational vehicle use. Majority vote of the planning board members present and voting is required to recommend approval to the city commission. The item is anticipated to be heard by the city commission for first reading on February fifth, twenty twenty-five, and for second reading, February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and that concludes staff's presentation.
Thanks, Dennis. Just if you, I could ask you, there was a lot there that you took us through, just specifically, if you could ask, if I could ask you, take us through the process again of how this particular area was determined for this particular use.
Well, we, I think what was happening was the redevelopment was getting some activity for this particular use, really on ISB at different locations, and they were looking at different locations where, you know, I don't know if you know this, but probably about ten years ago, when we did our new land development code, they stripped a lot of the automobile uses off of ISB. They said, you know, we're going to make these all, you know, you can't have them. As time went on, I think that they've kind of softened their look on that a little bit and says, you know what, maybe this isn't a terrible use for the certain locations where it might be appropriate. They've been in contact with some developers who are looking at certain locations, and so they were focusing on what locations would be appropriate for this use, and they kind of targeted this area, and they said, you know what, near the railroad tracks in this area, you know, a little bit east of the school would be an appropriate location to be able to have this use. So, we kind of narrowed it down to certain areas and worked with redevelopment staff as to what would be appropriate, and that's how we kind of came to this, this area for this location.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Eddie, Bernie, please.
I'm sorry. You know, this is, this is into the going down ISB. You know, and I just can't believe that that's going to be the highest and best used bunch of used cars. That's basically what it boils down to. There's another, there's a dealership on the other side of the road, the north side, and obviously, he does well. Has a high, high quality of cars of what I've noticed going through. But I would doggone, I think that that's, there's a lot better use for that part of the property. I mean, if it, if you had parking lots, it would be better, you know, because with a bunch of used cars, this is a gateway. You know, you keep on talking about the city. They talk about one thing, and they start doing something else. They, they talk about one thing and they start doing something else. This is a gateway. We want to have you going down International Boulevard from the Speedway. You've got the university there. We're developing the, the things, and here all the bunch are going to put a bunch of used parking, uh, cars there. And I just don't see the, the reality of it, uh, if what you want to accomplish in the city. You know, this is a tourist area. They didn't come here to buy used cars. They come down here to have fun, enjoy theirsself. And, you know, and, and I, I really believe that the city's letting the, the residents down of doing something like this and changing the code. You don't necessarily, you know, you're trying to put something in there so there'll be something. I think that there, you could spend your time a little better than that, finding a, a really good use. I mean, if it was something more for the university. Ah, you know, they, they bought the building across the street from it. You know, we want to make this place, we want to make it top-notch. We don't want to degrade it, in, in my opinion, that's what it is.
Well, I, I, you know, if you take a look up and down ISB and some other, uh, other places in the city, you find a lot of, you know, buy here, pay here, used car places, and it, and it has a, has a look to it that I don't think is, is a good look, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, by putting this in a land development code and allowing it in a land development code, where you have a site that doesn't, doesn't currently permit it, they would have to come in and, and bring that site into code compliance, which means a landscape buffer along the front of the property. If they're going to have any fencing, it's got to be the decorative fencing that's required in the redevelopment area. Uh, the building would have to be designed to meet redevelopment design standards. All of these things would have to be in place, which currently don't exist for those buy here, pay here. But this, by putting it in as a legal conforming use, they're allowed to do that, and they, they would be required to do that. Where on properties right now, you're not seeing that activity. Right now, you're seeing vacant lots that are sitting there with no activity and, and no progress. So this was an opportunity to, in a very limited area, to allow it with the redevelopment of the site to be able to meet those requirements.
In other words, this could be kind of a legal upgrade. You could move to some of these.
One hundred percent. It would be the opportunity to see some of these sites redeveloped, um, to a certain standard that maybe would be more appropriate that, that we want to see on ISB, where, where, right now, we just don't have it. Um, and, and it's, and again, it's a limited area that we were, we were looking at to, to be able to do this. It wasn't going to be up and down the entire corridor of ISB, but, but it gave us the opportunity to take a couple of sites that maybe are, have been vacant and not being used, that they might be able to be used, provided they met all of the code requirements.
And of course, the other, uh, bit of that challenge is if not here, then where? And then you get into those scenarios of where, what other options we may have. Mr. Robinson, please.
Um, but the other used car dealers that you're mentioning, wouldn't they be grandfathered in? And they would, would they be, um, if they already exist in, that they would still exist as is, and this would not affect them? I, I, you know, I agree with Vern. Um, we're saying that ISB is the gateway, especially to the touristy area, to the beachside area. And I, and this, I don't think is an appropriate area for, um, you know, what you're proposing. When I look also, remember last month, there's, um, a proposal on board for this massive downtown, um, apartment complex? I don't see this, you know, blending in or being a compat- compatible, um, business for those, um, apartments and what we are planning for the downtown. Well, I, I agree with Vern, uh, and, and this area right here, I think there's, uh, I know that you're the, the Midtown Redevelopment Board, so, oh yeah, because they're looking for anything or just about to improve, you know, instead of the vacant lot. But not, not, uh, we have enough used car and light vehicles set. I don't, I don't, I agree with Vern, I'm sorry.
Let me just, let me just expand on, let me expand on that just a little bit. This is for the sales or rental of light vehicles. And I will tell you that the, the redevelopment has been in contact with a national rental car company that wants to go at that location because they see the value of the, the Embry-Riddle, or excuse me, the BCU campus, where students over at BCU have been renting cars, and they go up to Mason because that's the closest location for them to rent cars. So they have to go to Mason. So they were looking for a location where they could be close to the BCU campus. And they were also looking at the new residential that was coming in along Ridgewood, as people having an opportunity to be able to rent a car someplace close. And it was a national, uh, rental car company that was looking to come in here at that location, and we're going to be coming in and redeveloping the site to be able to do that. That was the impetus for us to, to move forward and say, where can we do this, where it would be appropriate? And we wanted to limit the scale and, uh, where this could occur, and this is where we determined that this was the best place for it to happen. And in doing so, we also took the Spanos, uh, uh, used car, uh, uh, development that's right over there for now a, a, uh, legal non-conforming use and making it a conforming use. So if they were to do any kind of improvements over there, they would, they'd be allowed to, but they'd have to meet all code requirements to do that. Right now, they're just locked in. What you have is what you got, and that's all you're going to get. Uh, if they're going to do any improvements, they'd be able to do it with making this a legal conforming use at that location. So that was another thing that we were taking a look at. So that's, that's what we were looking at. That's why we really tried to limit it to a location like this. So, uh, that was, that was staff's, um, uh, that's our goal, and, uh, that's why we decided to come forward with this type of text amendment.
Very good. Please.
I, I, I think something needs to be done. And when you look at the, the ISB corridor, uh, into the new venue of Daytona Beach eventually, because we're talking, putting all the money on Beach Street and apartments and all these other stuff going on, going in. Um, anywhere from Nova Road to, um, Railroad Track. And I think we're thinking, and I'm thinking stigmatism, okay? It's across the track. When you get across the track, then everything changes. Right, the other side of the track. And I don't want to see that. We got a wonderful city, and I think we need to be able to develop it where it's attractive, especially on the main thoroughfare. That's, that's, you tell someone, that's what takes you all the way to the ocean, really. And so, um, I, I know their car place, dealerships will come in and make it look nice and do all these wonderful things, but is that the best place? Uh, if they will come and they will spuce it up and, and around the whole area, and they would actually build it up, it might really look nice. It might be one of those things that turn out to be really nice, leading across the track, getting to US one, and then to the downtown area. But it needs to really give it a good facelift. It needs that, that whole area from, because you got the CBD, uh, while the hep, all the other stuff coming in. And we're just plugging things in, and the Midtown is just plugging things in. We needed a fa- a dollar store, some kind of dollar, you know, because, um, uh, food and so forth in that area. And the folks need that, but we need to get the right folks in there. So when it looks, it looks really nice. We have some wonderful buildings. Uh, Bethune-Cookman has some wonderful, pretty building, beautiful buildings. We want to add to that, especially going across into the, the downtown. And so, um, depends on what they come back with. I'm for it, though I can be against it. It all depends on what, what they're putting, how it's going to look.
Well, let's keep in mind as well, if we can, let's remember that this is a relatively small area that we're dealing with here, that in, and with the legal upgrade that we've been discussing, it does give staff a, a little bit of a planting bullet in their gun to be able to up, not only have the standard for what's coming in, but perhaps also have discussions for who's al- already there.
Right.
And it is a needed service. That, I don't think there's any, any doubt about that. And frankly, it would be in the best interest of these entities to present themselves in the very best way, if no other reason but to do good business. So I would, I wanted to throw those out there for the, the board's consideration.
But what I would like to see is maybe a business proposal, and then bring in the amendment that you're requesting. You know, it's like we put in the horse before the, you know, we're, we're jumping the gun. We don't have any definitive proposal coming in and then requesting the amendment.
The problem with that, Mr. Robinson, if you don't open the door, it's difficult for people to come in.
Yeah.
I understand the.
But why are we opening, we got to be careful when we open the door. You don't know who's going to come in also. So what I, you know, if you're going to come in the door, I want to see what you're bringing inside my house.
And that's what the, and that's what.
Before I says, okay, you can build, you know.
Understood, understood.
But then it still have to, um, the folks that are planning on coming in if this passes, they'll have to present to us and have, would that still come back before us, or would it?
You know, the, the thing with this type of use is the, um, the buildings, really Planning Board only sees, and, and, and it's, and it's in the redevelopment, so, so you wouldn't be seeing a staff, uh, uh, site plan. The redevelopment board would be seeing a site plan. But they only see site plans when the buildings are over twenty thousand square feet, same as the Planning Board. But they will be required, they're still required to meet all of the code requirements for the building design. They're still required to meet all of the code requirements for the, for the, uh, landscaping in the front and the tree requirements and the parking requirements, all of that's still, still required. Uh, signage requirements, they got to meet code requirements. It wouldn't be any additional signage than the redevelopment, um, um, uh, Land Development Code would allow. So, uh, everything that they do would have to be code compliant. It's nothing more than that, so.
Anything else for Dennis? Hearing done, I'd ask for a motion for item four D, please.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve agenda item four D, Land Development Code Text Amendment, D E V twenty twenty-four seven sixty-eight, with sales or rental for light vehicles only, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Very good, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Thank you, I believe it passes three to two.
We got, okay.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five A, the twenty twenty-five Planning Board Calendar. Um, same as last year, fourth Thursday of every month, except for November and December, where we meet on the third because of Thanksgiving and Christmas. But, uh, there was some discussion, um, prior to the meeting that we may have a few folks, myself included, that may be struggling with making the January twenty-third meeting. So perhaps we could talk about that a little bit. I'll, I'll be out of town. Uh, Pastor, I think you were talking about being gone yourself. Mr. Robinson, uh, you know, it's a long way from South America, so we want to give you a little time to get on back. My thought, if it would work for, uh, you gentlemen, and anyone else for that matter, perhaps, because it is a five-week period before we have that meeting, perhaps we could look, Dennis, to the sixteenth, if that would work for, for you.
Or the, because, okay.
If, if we could do the.
Whatever would work. If we could do the thirtieth, we can make that meeting instead of the, uh, January twenty-third, make it January thirtieth.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that gives us time to put together the agenda, get through the holidays, and it still gives us four weeks, uh, before the next planning board meeting.
Going the wrong way, not giving you as much time. Okay, understood. Would that work for all parties?
That would work for me.
Work for, for you gentlemen? Mr. Robinson, how do you feel about this?
Chick is.
He's a busy man, you know, he's got a lot going on. We got him, ah, okay. Well, with, with that one change, you changed the January meeting from January twenty-third through thirtieth. Could I get a motion to approve the planning board schedule for twenty twenty-five, please? Item five A.
I make a motion we approve, um, the twenty twenty-five Planning Board Calendar with the one change, in January thirtieth.
Very good, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Thank you very much. Moving to item five B, election of Planning Board Officers. Uh, we need to do this for the coming year. But it's been my pleasure to serve as your chair, and if the group, uh, so deems it, I will be glad to continue in that role if you would like me to. Put that out.
You know, I'll just make a point of saying that a, a, a chairman can serve for two consecutive terms. Uh, Mr. McLean has served for one, uh, one year, so he can serve for another year, uh, in that position.
All right, maybe I'll do a little better job in half-two than half-one, we'll see.
In the second term, right? Uh, well, I nominate you, what we do, destine the nominations? Okay, I nominate, uh, Mr. McLean for chair, and.
Second.
No, second.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Thank you, thank you very much, I'm appreciative. Next, we move on to Vice Chairman, please.
Yeah, I nominate Mr. Weatherholt for Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Congratulations, sir. And let's move smartly on to Secretary, shall we?
Aye.
All in favor? Both same sign? Great, great job. Congratulations to, uh, all of you, and looking forward to working with you folks in the coming year. Moving forward to Downtown Area Board. Anything going on there, please? Hearing none, okay. Uh, Midtown, please?
Let me see if I can find my notes.
Okay, okay. Oh, please your notes. Which did I run by?
No, that's all right, that's all right.
Went up well.
Uh, I did not make the meeting, but I called to get information on what transpired. Uh, the Midtown, Midtown received three commercial grants for MMB, uh, for improvement. Uh, and this is supposed to begin in January, uh, January through February. Uh, the city of Daytona Beach received an award for outstanding public service. Um, and, uh, Michelle Tolliver received that for the city.
Oh, very good.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, that, that award was actually a public-private partnership for the Valencia Square Development on Orange Avenue.
Ah.
It's the multifamily, which includes, uh, affordable housing component to it. So we, uh, we worked with the private developer framework, uh, to, to have that, uh, project come forward.
That's great.
That's excellent, okay. Anything else? Madam Secretary? Um, moving on to, uh, Beachside?
A long meeting.
Was Mr. Newman present?
Uh, well.
Okay, moving right along.
Long.
The, most of the discussion, uh, it was a lot about the, uh, the downtown parking, doing events. Uh, it seemed to be that, uh, some of the commissioners have, have brought it up that, that, you know, they'd like to see parking downtown doing special events. Personally, I think that, uh, you know, being a, a non-voting member, I could just make comments and just listen to what they say and relate it to you, especially, uh, here on the Planning Board. My belief is if we want to develop the areas down around Main Street, if we want to have better housing, if we want to get more people to buy the houses, fix them up, to live there, parking in the lawn's not the issue. It's not the good thing. It's not, you know, it's something that, uh, and I understand that the, the folks that live there, you know, they like to make a little money, like everybody else. But if you're going to develop an area, uh, one thing you don't need is flat parking. I mean, flat parking in general, I think the city ought to, uh, personally, I think they ought to put their vision on, you know, multiple-deck parking. And, you know, where there will be adequate people to, to park and come down, be safe. Uh, you know, it, it's always said that the city doesn't have any liability if somebody gets hurt on private property. I think that they probably legally don't. It could be an argument, but if they're allowing, and we have parking standards in the city. And I think that the, the city of Daytona Beach is very lax in doing it. And, uh, you know, and it's, it's something that, uh, you know, that, that I don't think it's good for the, good for the city and, uh, and there was a lot of discussion about it, uh, that they wanted, some wanted it and some don't. Uh, personally, I don't think it's, it's good for the city. Uh, they talked about the chamber. I won't even go into detail on that, you know, about, uh, the proceeds and, uh, having an audit for, from the chamber. Uh, it's, it's supposed to have one. They don't have, they haven't had one, to the best of my knowledge, since I've been here. Uh, I was a member of the chamber at one time, and I chose, uh, I was a member of the chamber at one time, and I chose a different way. But those were the comments, and I was wondering if anybody else would like to be on that board to represent the planning board.
Gosh, and I'm so busy, Mr. Vice Chairman. But it's interesting, I think your comments about flat parking, just the concept of it perhaps does not send the right message of what, where we're trying to go as a community, particularly in that area. So, hopefully, there'll be some discussions that we can look at. And you're doing a great job at hanging in there in those long meetings, and we'd hate to take that away from you.
I know, it's, you know, but if somebody else...
Mr. Vernon.
Please, Mr. Robinson.
What are they doing, what are they doing about Main Street? You know, when we look at Main Street, there's so many empty shops down there after, you know, the bikers have left, and it's just like one dead street. And I think there ought to be a focus on bringing in additional business that will attract folks all year long. It's a nice street. It's a nice, it's great as an attraction, but it's just dead.
The problem, the way that I look at it personally, and being a businessperson, I think the city is lax, and this is probably better discussed with Dennis, but I personally, I think that they've been lax, they've been allowing the people down there to not keep their buildings up to code. I know that'd be a fact. We've talked about it for years. I was on the building board. City has not done anything about it, they haven't enforced their codes. They've allowed people to, you know, paper over the windows. They finally made them take the paper down, and you look around, it's back up. They keep it open for three weeks out of the year. They don't seem, and they make enough money, they allow them to set tents in the streets in front of their areas. I think that code enforcement's lax, and I think the city in general. And that goes from, you know, from City Hall here.
Okay, well, I think that public point's been made, and appreciate your opinion, but I think the interest of everyone who's here, let's move forward if we could. Moving on to affordable housing, there was not a meeting, nothing to say there. Next, item 5G, public comments. Do I have anyone who would like to comment on the issues of the day? Well, I think we have one, Jenny. So, please come on up. Oh, we have two, and also. Jenny, please come up. You know the routine, Navy address, please. Good to see you tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Jenny Mayback, 501 Party. Always a pleasure. I love the planning. I speak as a person who loves super-dense, vibrant cities, and one of the, kind of a paradox of really cool cities that attract a lot of people, is they're, they can be messy. They can be messy. The buildings aren't always pristine. Like, downtown Tokyo is not pristine-looking. It's like a little bit chaotic, but in a good way. Wherever you walk, you're going to see something interesting. And lots of other cities I've been to, like New Orleans, are just different, really cool, lively places. And I think we don't have to be super-obsessed with, I'm not saying we don't want to be clean, we don't have to be super-obsessed with everything being pristinely scrubbed. It's more like we have to allow. It's about allowing. Like, I live in, right next to the Main Street, right in that area. Our affliction is vacancy. Vacancy is death. Like, I'll almost take anything over a vacant building. I have a perennially vacant, I call them scumlord properties, because slumlords at least rent out their properties to get people's money. Scumlords are such fat cats that they can just leave dozens of properties empty, I guess because of the tax code, I don't know, it lets them deduct some, I don't know, it's just like, it's death. I've lived next to meth labs that were better neighbors than an empty building, and I'm not like, I don't want to live next to a meth lab, believe me. And empty lots, it's horrible, horrible. It's just, so, any, I'm not saying anything, but like, for example, on ISB, the idea of some used car dealerships being allowed, I think that's okay, because activity can beget other activities. So, like, as some people said, if they have to bring some aspects more up to code and put in nicer landscaping, it's going to look nicer, and then it might attract someone else to want to set up a business there. And, okay, I don't even own a car, so I wouldn't have a horse in that race, but humans use cars, and this is a motorsports kind of town, and it fits. Tattoo parlors, you know, a lot of people like tattoos. Ideally, you wouldn't have 20 used car dealerships just all lined up in a row, but that's, that wouldn't be likely to happen. But I do think if a property is starting to look new and there's activity there, someone else might say, hmm, I think I want to put my little espresso kiosk there or something. Actually, someone set up an espresso cart, like, right near Public Works. I think they're going to do really well. But, so basically, vibrancy, and where else was I going with that? I know it can be hard as a city to kind of relax a little and just kind of let them, let more in, but let's try. Thank you. I know, I can jibber jabber.
Well, perhaps, Jenny, we can leave a little room for character, perhaps.
Yes, thank you, and trust that it'll be okay. Our city's great.
Thank you, Jenny. Ms. Ruby, good evening.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Happy holidays, everybody, and we're available. Thank you. 137 Park Avenue. I think there's a lot of positive stuff happening on Main Street. We, C4RD went and did an inventory in the winter of 2018, 2017. It was horrible, and there's a lot that looks so much better. You know, we have the building across the street from Helen Humphrey's store. That used to be just filled with really, just, I guess they thought it was nice-looking, but the windows were filled with these constant displays that weren't right, and now they're clean. So, code has done that. Part of the reason there's issues with code down there is there's, there's a regular code enforcement, and then there's code for the redevelopment areas. And for a long time, it was unclear who was enforcing that. Code would say the redevelopment board should, redevelopment department should enforce it. Redevelopment department would say the code enforcement people should enforce it, and I hope, it looks like they're getting a little bit together on that. So, I think that's been helpful. Then there's been the addition of, you know, we have the world's most famous brewery. They opened up. We have, I always call it 23 Bistro, but it's 35 Bistro. I mean, they are phenomenal. If you haven't gone there, go there. You can park right across the street, the food is great, the service is lovely, the atmosphere is wonderful. I mean, you wouldn't believe you're on Main Street. So, I think there's good things happening. The city has got kind of an interim agreement with, for the Corbin Building, to bring Savagecraft Ale Works there, which they're going to, it's a brewery, but it's family-oriented, and they have music, and they close at a reasonable hour, and they're not designed to be wild. So, if you want to go look at what they do in Columbia, South Carolina, it's phenomenal. So, I think there's great things happening. And the Bike Week Master Plan, part of what Mr. Weatherholt was talking about was that surface parking, the allowing residents to park on their properties, which I think is a poor idea. That's part of a rewrite of the Bike Week Master Plan, to make it so that we can encourage businesses to be open year-round, and be more vibrant year-round. So, I don't, I think, I haven't written my email yet, but I have a lot of suggestions on the first draft. I think there's a lot of good things happening on Main Street, and I encourage you to just go try the 35 Bistro, they're phenomenal. Go to the world's most famous brewery. There's going to be a thing at the Environmental Center on Wales, that's coming up. So, there's stuff that's happening down there. The street looks better, they're redoing the arch, they're getting new, that new arch sign is going to be, Stadorf's going to be new. Hopefully, they're going to coordinate that with kiosks, and I think things are looking up there. So, I feel encouraged, and I think you all, and I hope everything's wonderful for the year.
Thank you very much. All right, last but not least, any board member comments as we finish our last meeting of the year? Let's do staff first. Thank you. Keep me straight, Pastor.
Yeah, just wish everybody a happy holiday season.
Thank you, Dennis. Now, let's go with the board, go ahead, Pastor. And anyone else? Anyone else?
Merry Christmas, everyone, and a Happy New Year.
Absolutely.
Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hallow Day, and Happy New Year.
He's got everything except for a Happy Boxing Day, which I'm really disappointed.
Happy Boxing Day.
Yes, yes.
That's right. We celebrate Boxing Day.
Well, that, ladies and gentlemen, see you all next year. Thank you very much. Appreciate.